It's a present thing to do from memory, I don't know.
Actually, I was tempted to do it, but that would be wrong. Please state that public hearing will be held by the board of citizens of the village of New Falls, January 14th, 2015, at seven thirty PM, a public hearing regarding adoption of a local law regarding affordable housing. Any person is entitled to be heard upon said proposed local law, except for the carrying copies of said proposed local law or available for review.
Thank you very much. Anyone here to discuss this local law?
You have a copy of the law.
You can have my copy of the law. Here, you can have mine.
We have the secret, that's what. I got the technical.
Oh, okay. You won't be getting any copies returned to you, or?
No, I have the copy, so you can do it.
Alright, so, Adele, yes, sir?
I just, I agreed it, so I typed. Are you gonna discuss it tonight, or are you gonna hold on?
We were gonna discuss, well, the idea was to vote on it either tonight or next meeting.
Well, I suggested we vote on it next meeting.
Yeah.
As per our current.
Yeah, Will had suggested that.
We won't vote.
Here, you can have my copy.
I have mine, if we're not, and you can.
I just have a question, I think it's on the website, I can't find anything on the website.
It's definitely on the website.
But could you talk to, could you?
And it was part of the package.
Adele, are we talking about the website later?
Well, I just wanna go, because it's on the website, I couldn't find it.
It's definitely not. It's, it's a new website, it's been a little tricky, but it's definitely there, I see.
This is secret.
Okay.
I don't have any more copies of it than you do.
I have a copy.
I have.
Okay, so, hearing though for the comments, Emily?
Wait, wait, mildly comment is if you could keep this hearing open till your next meeting, so I can have a chance.
We will.
You will?
Yeah.
Well, we have to vote to do that. This is, I think, almost entirely a law that has, was on the books. Never, I won't get into it, never mind. I'll just let you read it. So, folks wanna continue the public hearing?
I want to continue the public hearing and act on the law at our next meeting.
Can we make any comments on the law in the course of the, the regular, the rest of the meeting, now?
We wouldn't be discussing it again tonight.
We will not be discussing it.
We'll discuss it next week after the second public hearing. Unless you wanted to discuss it tonight, it's up to the board.
I just had one comment.
Want to close the hearing, or?
Continue the hearing.
Move to continue.
All in favor of continuing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so, if you, you wanna put that on the agenda to?
I'm gonna give it to you.
Okay.
You can use it. I thought we had agreed.
Yeah, why don't you just tell us what it is now?
I thought we had agreed that the, the housing board will be, I thought we had agreed on an adjustment to the characteristics of the members of the housing board. So, I thought we had carried it in, must be residents of the Village of New Falls over the age of 21 and able to vote in village elections.
I thought that was into the case.
That's not in that?
Further?
No, I don't see it.
I thought I saw that.
Must be residents of the Village of New Falls, it doesn't say.
Yeah.
Doesn't say age. I'm wish to amend the law per recommendation of trustee Rocker.
Is there a second?
Can I second it?
You can second it, yeah.
You said 21?
Yes.
Why 21?
Yeah, should be able to vote and make legal decisions.
Well, voting is 18.
Yeah.
Voting is 18, not 21.
I'll, I, I'm, I want us to just have people who can vote, that's.
That's fine, voting age.
So, over the age, or, so?
18 then.
Residents of the Village of New Falls and able?
And vote, and registered voters.
Registered voters.
We do it.
Well, I want, I don't know if they're gonna be, I was just saying that they can vote, whether they choose to vote this election or they don't choose, I'm not following anybody around.
So, must be residents of the Village of New Falls and at least 18 years?
Or eligible to vote.
Eligible.
Eligible to vote.
And eligible to vote.
Hmm?
Okay.
In village elections.
Would you wanna email Will and see if that constitutes?
I thought we already had done that.
Well, the, the law we had the public hearing on didn't include that, because this is the one that was noted.
So, I'm moving to amend it.
So, we moved to amend the, the local law, but we need to find out whether we?
And we're continuing the public hearing.
And we're continuing the public hearing. Okay.
We have to vote.
As, as amended, I don't think it matters whether you close it or continue it.
That's an adjustment we're gonna make to the law before we continue the hearing. That way, you don't like having another hearing.
This is taking more than the length of time I want for the other.
Yeah.
I.
So, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we say we're closing the public hearing?
No, we wanna keep it open.
I know, but what I'm saying is, it might be cleaner legally to close the public hearing, amend the local law, instead of new public hearing for the next meeting, on this, on the revised local law.
I don't think we need to close it, it's not that big a change, I.
That's what we need to find out from Will.
I think we'll, at this point, continue it, and we'll make this amendment to it before.
Okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's fine.
Procedure is important?
Aye.
Speaking of, it needs to be, was it moved and seconded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, just checking. All in favor?
Aye.
Will you make sure with Will that's not a substantive change?
I will send this to Will.
Okay, thank you.
For the quirk, okay.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to its citizens, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So, Ellen, you know we just made a change in the document.
Let me see. We have a couple of additions to the agenda. One is, one regards the EPC secretary.
Oh, you wanna do that?
Um, I'd like that to be consent agenda, if that's okay?
Is there?
I would like to talk about it in the executive session.
Okay, that's fine.
And the resolution regarding department head for building department, that we'll discuss that after executive session as well.
Yes, yes.
But I just wanna put it, a little marker there. Did we have anything else for the agenda?
I asked, remember, I asked the end.
Oh, yeah, Tom's, Tom's six minutes.
Up two.
And amending the fee schedule?
Amending the fee, that's not also, that's not in consent?
No.
No, this is, I'm just adding to the agenda.
Items to the agenda.
And then the clarify the motion of 12-3 on the geothermal that the board acted on, the mayor's going to clarify.
Jason, you also have to. What is your, the topic of your six minutes?
Mine's six, but water, water.
Okay, okay.
What else?
Water.
Jason, you also have to set this.
I don't need taking off the consent agenda, if you can just tell me the authorization to renew the agreement with Fisher Security, there was no monetary amount attached.
Ooh, I don't know. It's sole source, I think.
You wanna pull it up?
What number?
Number five on the consent agenda.
No, I don't think that, but I didn't think.
And I don't know whether this is just an annual renewal, or is this?
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
They're, so, we don't.
It is a renewal.
It is a renewal.
Well, that's what I, part of what I wanted is, because there's no money attached.
Alright, do you wanna wait until we get the amount from Blue? I mean, I think it's sole source will be.
Monthly monitoring charge is $24. Just, just.
Was it $24?
Yeah, but it, but my question is, is, is this a common thing, have we booked at others, you know, is this?
It's our annual contract, so.
Oh, it is our, and?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a renewal of an agreement.
Okay, then I can leave it on consent agenda in that time.
Okay.
Katie, was there anything else we needed to add?
The central Hudson agreement to add extra lights, if you'll authorize the mayor, let's add on to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
It's not on the agenda?
Yes, yes, it's number.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I received the actual agreement later and that's what made me.
No, but there was a memo saying we were going to get it.
Yeah, that's number 18.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Anything else?
For, that's added to consent agenda?
Added to any of the agenda. Most of this is not, none of this is consent agenda. This is just our agenda.
Yep. My question, I had one question on the consent agenda, and I'm leaving it on, then the fee schedule that we're going to amend, and the clarifying of the motion are new items, not on consent.
Right. Anything else? Alright, I move, we approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Ira?
Could you speak a little louder?
Is it possible for you to speak a little louder? It's harder to hear you back there.
My comment has to do with the contract that is paid for the start regarding the incident on the Village. I don't know if anybody can do with that, I don't know if he's taking it to the attorney, and I ain't telling you if somebody's dealing with it, but they're asking for the hair, it's not worth it, they do.
The franchise agreement, your franchise?
And I say that for a number reasons. One, I had Katie back to go through the whole thing, and my dealings with Tony Martin, and I find it very interesting, I don't know if any of the trustees or every sign of an agreement, that gave all the benefits to the other party, and I don't, and that's the way that contract meets. Now, getting to a little specifics, um, and that agreement signed, oh, by the way, I left that to a clerk, I didn't get a copy of it, also I was able to, which I needed, get an electronic copy, I'm just picking up the same since I found out it's signed, or they're just gonna have to, authorities who basically don't know if they have jurisdiction over. Basically, it comes down to this, according to the agreement we supposedly reached, they supposedly agreed to, senior citizens in the Village of New Falls are entitled to a discount of one month's service every year, a covered pay, providing they got it before. That's the agreement, right? Now, a couple of problems with that. One, Tony Warner has no record of who got it before, so they could say, we have no record, and I know this, this is part of what I was checking. Point number two, the executives at Tony Warner are not admitting to the people you have to talk to, that it is such a thing as a franchise agreement from the village. And again, I know this for a fact, because they wanted to be able to, my bad, they wanted to be able to go out, spend $20 to get a copy, and send it. This is below me, okay? Um, I spoke to the PSC, and told them what was going on, they weren't sure whether they had jurisdiction over something like this, because basically, as an individual, it's definitely crazy against the standard, using people that signed that contract, on behalf of those who are opinionated. But what's worse is the PSC gave the name of supposed company to contract, which I did, which will be back, very indignant, and proceeded to specifically say, there is no such thing, we've done away with it all, you people are not entitled to it, and I pointed out the so-called franchise agreement, is, well, we don't have a copy, is number one, and what we're gonna do, because I guess because of my complaint with the PSC, is we'll do you a favor, and give you the discount this year, but we're not giving it to anybody anymore. Now, problem with that is, again, when I said the contract is not worth the paper straight away, if there's no penalty for them ignoring what's in the contract, what's the point of having it? This act, and when I went through that whole contract, they are required to A B and C, but if they don't do A B and C, look to them, what are you gonna do? This is crazy, who, who signs a contract? Uh, I, I don't understand it, the thing is, um, when I was talking to the town, because I needed an electronic copy, and they have that all in their website and stuff, apparently they had the name of a secret agent at Tony Warner, and you can call, and the reason she's a secret agent is because they don't put this through as hard as a senior discount, she, she just gets somebody who's due the pension account number, and gives you credit. That's why they have no record of who they gave senior citizens discounts, this is a game that's going on, and I said, I have to come here, because as a resident, I have no standing in this kind of a debate, I don't know what the PSC should be doing, what I certainly think, that on behalf of the seniors who actually can get hurt by this, the people, the seniors that actually, people that contribute to whatever they have to do for the village, you have to pay, and I say taxes and stuff, somebody should be, you know, I mean, you guys should, at least when you sign a contract, have your, I don't know if he did it, I'm wrong, he looked at it, and you got a bad attorney, but I don't know if he did it, but somebody other than, you know, that, that would be like me, you know, getting, getting a, you know, a, a real estate contractor or something like that without an attorney, not having any idea what they had to talk about, and I just don't think it's right.
Jason, I believe I have received mailings saying, if you're a senior citizen, you are entitled to one month, I'd like to move this whole issue to the Public Access Committee and ask for a report from them on this for our second meeting in the board.
I think that's fair, I'll second that.
Thank you. If anybody needs any of the names and telephone numbers of all these fancy people, you're hiding in among these, oh, they're not considered.
And they really should know who are the senior citizens, I mean, you know, they've asked all that, so it should be automatic.
Who are saying that, that, exactly as we're saying, we have no intention of honoring the agreement.
Yeah, we'll see what the Public Access Advisory, see what the PAC says.
Yeah, no, this is, I said, my next step is to be attorney general, no, because they sat here, I don't know if they're attorneys, but they sat here, signed an agreement, which according to this lady, they had no chance of winning.
Well, let, let's see what we can find out and take care of it, Ira.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
With the vote on it.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Either Adele or Len, so, so, one of your hands up, please.
I know the public hearing for the housing law is over, but I understand what you meant, it's just going to be common, and I propose to amend the housing law that some agendas may find it dangerous, illegal, and ripe for selective enforcement.
You mean the rental property, not the affordable housing law?
Not the affordable housing.
Okay.
Well.
We'll, we'll see about the other one.
Call it housing standards.
Yeah.
Call it a rental law, right?
That's just a shorthand we've been using, yeah.
129.
Chapter 129, yeah.
So, if a property owner or tenant doesn't allow you physically to inspect the property, which by the way is their right, um, the village can get a warrant in order to inspect the property. Currently, we don't really have that problem in New Falls, because the property owners want their property inspected, so that everyone knows that they're safe and in compliance. Under this new law, you cannot be registered without first being inspected, and you can't have any violations. A violation can be something as simple as losing the voters in November, or a small paint shift. You can actually take away the property owner's right to rent under these circumstances, and this will be done selectively. And on the owner-occupied rentals, I would like to say, more than one board member lives in places that aren't currently inspected, even though they have living situations that are warranted, and if you felt that this law included you, then you would have your properties, the properties you live in, registered and inspected. Elected officials shouldn't behave in such a way as to skirt the laws they have acted. One thing for sure, this board is not leading by example. And that's one of my points, that is laws, 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 and laws are really easy. I'd like to see you all roll up your sleeves and get some real work done, maybe a community center for the kids, some beautification of the downtown, a fund to pay to things like the sewer pit or hookups on Grove Street, North Oakwood, fix the streets, make sure that kids still get lunch during the summer when their parents can't afford it, stop with the laws, and do some real work. Good friend of mine describes this government as doing things to its citizens instead of for its citizens, and I couldn't agree more.
Thanks, Adele. Len?
I have three things that I'd like to all tell you. Let's say the first, the pleasant one first, Fred Fine lives or just has moved to Coates, North Carolina, town of about 4,500 people, they get their water bill monthly, but why God's sake would we want water bills monthly? Any of you that have had a toilet that's gotten stuck and didn't know about it, three months later, you get that five or $600 water bill you wanna screen, that's one thing. So, it would, it would catch the mistakes within everybody's household, it would decrease, hopefully, our use of water, but more importantly than that, it would decrease all of that water that goes down to our sewer treatment plant that's already impacted, impacted and at very high capacity level. If we were to go in that route, of course, I realize it would be more work for the billing people, but the way that the meters are read now is man simply drives around in his truck, and electronically that information is gathered, but it would also give working capital to the village quicker, you wouldn't have to wait three months to get someone's check. Hopefully, after that bill came, that person may have either 30 days or 15 days to get you that money, so, just a thought, I don't know if it's something that you'd like to deal with, but environmentally, I can see that it would work very well, just a thought. Okay, the second thing I'd like to know is if any progress has been made with regard to the hookups on Milrock, North Oakwood, and Grove Street, I realize that you don't answer now, but that's okay, but it's, that thought just came to me recently, that it's unfortunate that it's all done now, and it didn't come to me until after it was done, if the sewer pipes were put deeper in the ground, and instead of pitching towards Main Street, it was pitched towards John Street, which the lower elevation is far lower, we wouldn't need to have the hookups in the back of that whole old houses on the west side of North Oakwood, they could just simply, I realize also, the reason, the depth they went, six to eight feet down, they probably would have had to go 14 or 15 feet down, the deeper they go, the more money it costs, but in the end, you had a system that works by gravity and doesn't need electronic pumps to pump it up, which are desperate to pay themselves, we could pick some time to have some kind of meeting in the future, I don't know when the D E C or the, the Blues group are going to decommission the sewer lines, I don't know if there's a scheduled date, but the sooner we can get this process moved along, we don't want it to happen, or have to scramble at the last minute. The last thing that I'd like to talk about is the, is the, is the rental law, section 129. It, it says here, a resident intended to lose his use of their residence as a result of the loss of a certificate of occupancy and or rental registration by virtue of a violation in this chapter, that, that article A says it has to be only one. Now, I have a problem with that in the respect that I happen to be quite capable, and I can fix most anything, but there are a lot of landlords out there who will need to get other people to service what they have broken or damaged, and it refers to section D, subsection D here, if it's within, corrected within 24 hours, it will not be considered a violation. Now, there are, there are, the, the timeframe that's here with regard to getting something corrected is not long enough, you have to get a contractor, have to get it in there, it just can't happen in 24 hours, and the law, the way it's written is the inspection is done, then the license is given, with the registration to move forward from then. So, if everything, that checklist that you've been given ahead is not in compliance, you could be denied that opportunity, depending upon the number of violations, I don't know if things could be fixed in 24 hours, if you're expecting in January, I know you can repaint the side of your house, you just can't do that because it's too cold, so, some of this needs to be looked at differently in that respect.
Thanks, honey. Any other public comment?
Jason, I apologize, but.
Please.
This is for everybody, Tony Warner has this gimmick about not giving you credit when your service goes out, unless you go before hours, and I say gimmick, because your electricity goes out, you don't have to wait four hours, you don't get billed credit, you're not used to it. The problem with this gimmick is they require a person who's out, who says out, actually call them and say, hey, you were out, I want my credit, uh, instead of doing it automatically. This is one of the reasons, now, that if you have an outage, you're on a Saturday or Sunday, or they do recent work, they don't bother correcting it until Monday, regular work day, because it's cheaper for them, because nobody calls, I guess they're really tired of the work issue, but nobody calls, so it's cheaper to pay somebody like me, even if it's, even if it's ten of us, you know, $2, or whatever the cost of that service is, than to have to ask somebody to fix it, again, no consequence to them if they don't, even though your contract says they, they, they have to respond with this, well, 24 hours or whatever, but that's another gimmick that they're perpetrating on the public, I said, and the, I asked the PSC, they said, no, that's the law, and, no, I can understand it, but law tells people, if you're out, when the second hits that four, it makes you on the call, so, you got the record of it, and, here, they have the record of it, and then if it's another hour or two hours, you are at least on record with them, that you wanted your credit, you had the title to, you know, not have to pay for something I don't care, thank you, I'm sorry, I just.
No worries, thanks, Sarah, thank you. Alright, if there's no more public comment, I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll move the resolution establishing the date of the tax sale.
Okay, that's actually a.
I'm still gonna move it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
This for this tax sale?
Oh, well, yeah, all in favor?
I, I wanted to say, that when we do a resolution, the resolution in and for itself as a body should appear in the minutes.
Yes.
Alright, well, if we, if it's unanimous, you can just mark us all down as aye.
Yes.
Go ahead, you wanna just do the roll call, though?
Wesley?
Aye.
Rosslyn?
Aye.
Brooks?
Yes.
I'll move the resolution adopting, uh, the res, local law, amending chapter 129. Is there a second?
I have a second, but I also would like to comment on Mr. Loz's concerns, I think you are misreading, and I believe that many, in fact, a lot of the issues that would have been raised in the discussion of these things has been addressed and amended, you can only. You can only lose, okay, your right to rent, so to speak, if you are in violation of heat source, electricity, sanitary facilities.
It is what the most recent version says. It does say that that's not what it says, so that I was just...
I should, I think we should be careful again. Are we now not in public comment? Are we engaged in back and forth conversation? Or is this board considering this issue?
The board is considering this issue.
Mr. Rocco, I have the right as a board member to make an observation
Yes, of course.
if there seems to be a need for clarification. That is my privilege as a board member, and it is my privilege as part of the discussion. I have seconded the mayor's motion, and I am just saying that I believe that some of the concerns that were just raised have been addressed and that many, many of the concerns legitimately raised in past discussions have been modified and addressed.
And I agree with that.
Was that it, Sally?
That's all.
That's all? All right, so, any other discussion?
The planning board has reviewed this.
Yes.
The county has reviewed it.
And the resolution encompasses a negative on C P. So if there's no more discussion, all in favor, or actually it's a roll call vote?
It's a resolution.
All, aye?
Rossler.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Brod.
Yes.
Thank you. And while we're here, I would like to move that we amend the fee schedule as proposed. And email today.
You are moving that up?
I'll just take it, we'll take care of it all right now.
Okay, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Jason, does the board understand what we're doing?
Well, I emailed everyone today.
Yes, I saw that today.
Okay, because there was a problem in our schedule. But we don't have to do this in accordance because now it's a part of the policy book, so we can amend.
So all in favor?
Aye.
All right, who's here for what? Bren is here for half a dozen things. Ellen, Fran, anybody here for something specific? No? I'm gonna propose to table a couple of things, but let's see how we get with some of these planning issues first. Let's just go right down the list, number eight. Local law amending section two twelve. Bren, you wanna join us at the table? You can talk to it from there.
I'm going to be the option of it.
Second.
Okay, and we've done, we've done everything we need to do with this, right?
We have, the county has voted against it, so we just need a super majority to pass it.
Okay, so you moved it, Sally?
I did.
Was there a second?
I seconded.
Any discussion?
I just wanna know, I had an old note from October that you will investigate the need to change the accessory apartment statute.
It is still on my list, but it is not in this section. There's a separate section for accessory apartment. It's called something other than accessory apartment to make it a little bit more confusing.
Detached.
Yeah, perhaps.
Two family detached apartment or something like that?
Maybe.
Can we make it less confusing?
Yes.
In its next iteration?
Yes, and I'll...
That would be good.
I'll have it for you for the next meeting.
Thank you.
But we need to pass this clause to bring into conformity the two laws that passed before you came on board talk in terms of all buildings needing to go for site plan review.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
It's a resolution.
Right, is it?
Yes, it is.
Oh.
It's a law.
It's a law.
Uh, West.
Aye.
Rossler.
Aye.
Rocco.
Yes.
Brod.
Yes, and will the minutes please note a super majority was required on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's skip down to number eleven. There's nothing, actually, I don't know if this is you really, Bren. The tool shed for the garbage burner nutrition, there's nothing. They just need a building permit, which they already plan to get.
Yep.
Okay.
It's that easy.
So I, I...
What do we need?
We need to give them a letter of agency allowing them to do it because we own the property.
But with the stipulation that Bren has recommended that they have to meet code and all.
Right, they, they need the, the letter of agency in order to file a building permit.
Yes.
I make a motion to authorize the letter of agency.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 What about the naming?
We're gonna put that on the next agenda, it should have been on this one. We'll put it on the next one.
Why don't we deal with it now, Michael? Did you handle a recommendation on that?
No, 'cause I'm not sure, it's not already named. I don't, I can't find any...
Well, that's what we were supposed to check.
Yeah, nobody can seem to find any records on it. Blue doesn't have anything.
It must be in past minutes.
Must be buried in those minutes somewhere.
When? Does anybody remember when the stone was placed there with the name?
It was there in the nineties when I was in college, so before that.
It probably has a date on it.
Pardon?
It may have a date on it.
Well, that seems to me that when that stone was approved to be placed, that would be when it was named.
Well, when did Mayor that pass, do you remember? Late eighties?
Wow, that would be...
No, I would say, I would say earlier than that. It would be right, well, it would be right in Tom Nyquist's first year, I would think, as mayor. He succeeded that.
Tom might know. Tom would probably know.
Yeah, maybe we should ask Tom.
Yeah, yeah.
Couldn't you call Tom? Okay, that's a good idea, he would know when that, when it was dedicated.
And he might not know exactly, but he could give us a reference.
And he would probably know if it was named specifically.
Yeah, okay, great. So we can table, we have that on the next agenda anyway.
Do you want Bren here for number twelve?
I do, but let's do a couple of other...
I don't think you actually voted on the, I, I, you had, Mayor, W. Mayor Rossler motions to the letter of agency, you seconded, but I don't think you actually voted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's do the comprehensive plan last. Let's give a couple of these, the comprehensive, number twelve, let's do that last with Bren.
I would like...
'Cause, well, 'cause all I have left is sixteen, seventeen is one issue, construction sidewalks. And nineteen and twenty is one issue, are one reason. So we do those and then do comprehensive plan, does that make sense?
Okay.
Well, it doesn't matter, 'cause what I would like to do is move that the clerk, be requested, to the best of her efforts, she has tried and tried, so this is not a criticism, to, to establish a joint board meeting with the town for the purposes of discussing the comprehensive plan. And that, that meeting must be held either by the first meeting in Jan, in February. Because we went into this together. We have interviewed candidates for this position together. And now it's time we put it to bed. And if the town does not wish, or has made the decision that we do not wish to participate in a comprehensive plan, I want to hear that at the table from them. And I don't think we want to find ourselves in the position of discussing something that we agreed to do together.
Second.
Okay, well, I'll discuss, we'll discuss this then. One, uh, two things, I guess. One is, um, I could see some benefit to us having a conversation about what we want to do, whether or not we move forward, whether we move forward with the town or not. 'Cause our master plan is now twenty years old and needs updating. Regardless of what we do jointly, we need to take care of our house as well.
I don't disagree with that, Jason, I'm just saying that I think we ought to make one more effort.
Okay, 'cause this is my, that was my follow-up question was that, you know, we got the, a couple of emails from the supervisor last event, right before the holidays, saying the town is no longer interested in the joint comprehensive plan, that other priorities have come up. And you think that's not a clear enough?
Well, I think, I don't know whether this...
You wanna hear from the whole board?
I don't know whether the supervisor was speaking for herself or for the board, but I would like to hear from the town board, the majority of the town board, that they are no longer interested in doing the comprehensive plan with the village of New Bucks. And then, if that answer is, we don't want to do it with you, then I agree with you, Jason. We then need to have a discussion at this table on the topic.
And I do agree with the timeline because no matter what, our budget season is coming up. So we need to know whether we're gonna do this so low.
We have the money in this year's budget to do this with the town.
Right.
I want to make two quick statements about this. One, I am very much in favor of comprehensive planning with the town, joint comprehensive planning. As I think you know, I was converted during my own campaigning to consolidation with the town, although I see that as a bleak prospect. But I do not see joint comprehensive planning as impossible to achieve.
I agree.
I would like to see us do that. We were at the penultimate step of a good beginning, and we failed at that. And I take some responsibility for the failure.
Nothing to do with you.
Well, that, I assume some responsibility for that. But I'm also, in my six minutes, going to ask your authorization to arrange a joint plan with the town for purposes of moving the water project.
I'll make, I'll make my motion to include that.
Okay.
Well, all right.
Yeah.
I don't even know what you're talking, Tom's talking about yet, so I don't know if I support it or not.
All right, that's an issue.
Yeah.
But I, I'm just, let, let me just say, that's what I'm saying upfront now. If we want to amend a motion later, of course, we can always take a motion back. We have a motion on the floor right now, yeah, on the table.
But the other thing, to be fair, and the town, of course, got caught with their building problem. They've had a lot of stuff coming up on their plate, as we do too. But that does not mean that we now should not begin the process together to get this accomplished. Because it's really essential, I think, for the whole community to have a comprehensive plan for the whole community. So I know, Katie, that you have made every effort. I'm just going to ask you to make a little extra effort to see if we cannot.
I'm happy to reach out.
Okay.
I have talked to two of the three firms that we interviewed, and they are both still very interested in.
I agree.
Wanted to let us know that if we had any questions, I don't think we have any questions for them, so, right now.
Yes.
So I have a problem. I would vote for the motion if it was just Sally's, but not another one.
I'm willing for it to be just Sally's at this point.
Okay, can we separate it to?
I want some clarity that I'm...
So it's just my motion.
Okay, good, 'cause I may agree with you.
So it doesn't seem weird when I all of a sudden make a motion.
I may agree with you, but I don't...
Five minutes.
Yeah, okay.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
So Sally's motion's been made and seconded, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, one more try. Well, there were some other things that involved Bren, but I'm gonna table them, or at least put them to the end. Discussion of wetlands, I'd like to have some, it's too crowded on the agenda. I want to have some time to talk about that, so I'd like to table number nine.
Yeah, Bren's not a part of that discussion.
Bren is a part of that discussion, that's what I'm saying. There are other things on the agenda that Bren would be involved in that I'm gonna table.
Okay.
Nine and thirteen, basically. I'd like to have a lighter agenda in order to have more time to talk about those two things.
Can I make one statement?
Please.
I was very pleased to see the redo of the wetlands map. I appreciate that greatly. I would have voted against this law when it came up without a, a new look at the Hudsonia Wetlands and a new tracing of the buffers for those. So I'm very pleased to see that that work has been done.
And it would, we would have been able to finish that work more, but there was a problem with Bren's computer. This program is frozen up.
Still.
And we're still, it's been several weeks, we're working on it.
Okay, that is great, thank you.
This is a work, what you like is a work in progress. Imagine how much you'd like to finish product.
I love to finish product.
But let's just clarify, the map that came with the law was not the Hudsonia map.
It was identical to the Hudsonia.
And it changed...
I'm not getting involved.
No, it was not. I did not change a thing.
I have both maps with it, but I...
Just the colors changed.
Let us just say that we can get a reasonable map to look at and consider that's an important step.
Right, so I'd like to get this cleaned up, bring it back to the table, and have us go over it and make sure it makes sense.
How we...
Do we have it now?
No, 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 I'd like to table that, table that.
Till when?
Till our next meeting for now. I don't want to throw, throw up too much.
Okay, can I just say something, Ben?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna take this till the next map. I do not, I want to know if Bren is unable, and you were going to do the map.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but we have an email from the mayor saying that you don't have, you can't do the map.
She can't do the delineation of wetlands to adjust the boundaries.
Right now, this is what I can do. What, the two maps that you've got in front of me, is, in front of you, is all that I can do because my computer is no longer communicating in this program.
And this is the same, this is the same shape files as the Hudson, this is the Hudsonia map?
Yes, this is the Hudsonia map, right.
This is the same data as the Hudsonia map?
So I've made one...
She's got the Ulster camp, she's got the flood maps from the federal government.
Right.
Yep.
She's got the, the Hudsonia original wetlands.
Right.
And put those two together, and I think that should be sufficient for us to have a first discussion before we go any further. Because there are budgetary considerations in doing this. And I think we need to know an approximate amount if we're going to hire somebody.
All, all these reasons are why I want to table.
Okay.
Table this until we can have a better conversation.
But I just wanted to get clear, 'cause Bren has worked on this.
Yes.
Brian was supposed to be in my office today, and I had an appointment this afternoon. So I'm assuming he'll be there tomorrow. If I can't get it fixed in my computer, I'll go over to the school and use their G I S.
So this is going to that board?
Okay, yeah.
Is it possible that the trustee's office computer could be loaded?
The program is, I mean, we may need to take the program off my computer. It's giving me other problems, so I suspect that...
It's a software problem.
Yeah.
I, I realize that, yeah.
So maybe we could put it on Bron's new computer and then see if it works. But I'm waiting for Brian.
Okay, and Jason, you want to table thirteen?
Thirteen as well.
But I would like to table thirteen for, for something else. The planning board has been trying to work on architectural standards for, and I don't care whether it's negative, we don't want, or we do want. And they are not ready yet to make a presentation.
And you think those two are connected?
Yes, they are very much connected.
We have talked about in the planning board meetings that perhaps there should be some regulations about not having a formula denied, yes.
Yes, that's all a part of the discussion on the architectural review statement.
But we can still have a conversation about whether the use is something we want to allow. Whether or not it looks like, well, for, just a brief example, the sandwich Massachusetts allows you to have a McDonald's as long as it doesn't look like a McDonald's or serve McDonald's food.
That's what they're talking about.
Right, so it's, we'll table it, we'll talk about it, we'll talk about it.
But I just wanted to bring up that I really love the recommendation from the planning board for us to look at before we have this discussion.
That's fine.
Okay.
That conversation is moving forward.
Also, as we're going down table number fifteen, because we don't have it from Will.
Oh, we don't have that?
We never got it from Will. All right, so now sixteen and seventeen go together. What is the local, we just need to make a motion to rescind?
Yes.
The local law, so I'll move, we rescind local law.
Second.
Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
One, seven, five, seventeen, Katie.
Yep.
Construction sidewalks.
Now, what's the discussion that we need to have subsequent to that?
Will proposed an amendment to that law that was pretty substantial.
Mm-hmm.
Right, like a lot of pages.
I'm assuming that this is Will's.
Seventeen.
Yeah. There's a small section that's mine, and the rest is Will's.
We all got it.
Yes. Yes.
We have Bren's original, and then we have the memo from-
Yeah, now, the original, the main one that I remember after my conversation with Will.
Bren, you had the hundred copies.
Oh, great.
We had originally had sidewalks had to be in if you did five thousand dollars or more worth of work. But Will and I and Bren kinda had talked about that, thought that's really too low a threshold if you're like renovating your kitchen or painting your house.
Yeah, we had this discussion.
Okay, all right, so the replacement then is any, anything that requires approval of the village planning board. Now, is that threshold high enough? Or is it still too low? I mean, what's the lowest thing you need from the planning board? What's the least expensive project you could do that would require planning board approval, do you think?
A lot like-
A fence?
Lot like renovation.
Ah, but this says renovated, rebuilt, expanded, or restored in any manner.
Right.
Renovated, rebuilt.
A shed.
But it's gotta have the dollar amount in that you're-
I mean, we could exclude a shed if we wanted to.
In any manner which requires approval.
Or a pot of, or like a fence, a shed or a fence.
So right now, am I correct in thinking that this law as written, if you didn't have sidewalks in front of your house and you put up a fence, you'd have to install sidewalks?
Yes, that's what we're saying.
That's what it, that's what it says?
And I don't think we'd wanna say that.
If, well, the planning board would only see a fence if, I'm thinking.
I saw a number of fences when I was on the planning board.
Okay.
Including fences that were in people's backyards.
Is there a category, like, maybe type one and type two actions require sidewalks? Because aren't fences and sheds unlisted actions? Are they unlisted actions?
I don't know, under secret-
Well, let's just look at it. I don't have a problem with A, because if you're building a new house, so why don't we say sidewalks are required on all newly constructed properties? That would not be-
That's what it says right there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that wouldn't mean a shed or anything like that.
Right.
Then then, on B, any property that is renovated, rebuilt, or restored, get rid of in any, in excess of fifty thousand dollars?
No, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, rest, you restore a house.
Well, that's the thing, I'd rather, I, we're trying, because we're trying to get rid of dollar figures in the code, too, remember? Because of the changing economy over time.
But my point is, if you put a new roof on your house, that's twenty thousand dollars right there.
Yeah.
Okay, you don't want somebody to have to build a sidewalk if they're just getting a new roof on their house.
This is the problem, this is the problem we're struggling with.
Right.
And a new roof wouldn't require a building permit unless they actually need to build something new. Just replacing shingles doesn't require a building permit.
Yeah, but you don't wanna do it that way.
Oh, yeah, that's my bad, sorry.
Yeah.
After three layers, you have to put in a new substructure.
Right, but it's still, you're right, it still wouldn't require a planning board.
So I don't think we wanna get into roofs.
So we have consensus that A is good policy? Now, do we wanna not require it for renovations at all?
Really, the whole, the whole issue is B, isn't it?
I passed it on, look at it.
The whole and only issue is B.
Mm-hmm, I think so.
For whom do we want to impose a responsibility? That the homeowner construct sidewalks in their absence? When do we want that to be required?
How about if, I mean, I'm not sure, you all have to tell me the terminology. How about if the footprint of the building, the original building, is changed or altered in a reconstruction?
What if we said any property that has its primary structure renovated, rebuilt, expanded, or restored? Then if you put up a fence or a garage or a shed, it's not gonna count.
Yeah, but what, what does that mean, any primary structure?
It means you replace the sign on your house.
You might put in a new kitchen, Bren, and new kitchens cost-
But that wouldn't require, that wouldn't go before the planning board?
Right.
No, it would not come to the planning.
It would not come to the-
New siding wouldn't go to the planning board? Anything cosmetic wouldn't go to the planning board?
Should we refer to Will on this?
This is from Will's draft.
Ah, okay, well, we could question him on this.
Any property that is renovated, rebuilt, expanded, or restored, would, I think it's okay. I think B is okay, if it's requiring planning board approval. Because you don't need planning board approval for a roof. You don't need planning board approval for interior renovations.
So what you're saying in terms of the primary structure would qualify?
Right, if we left it as is, it would apply to all the buildings on the lot. If we put primary structure in, it would just apply to the house, not the garage, or-
Right, so what we wanna do is, to get to that point, we should change B to say, the first sentence, any property whose primary structure is renovated, rebuilt, expanded?
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that does it.
Is there any circumstance anyone can think of where that would?
Oh, man.
You do something to a primary structure that requires planning board approval. Is there anything minor or unfair that we would fall into?
What if somebody's house burned and they rebuilt it?
That would be a primaries-
That could be the one problem, I would say.
But that would be a primary structure.
Yeah, but they-
Yeah, but it would be the sidewalk.
But they intend to rebuild it or renovate it.
Okay, I understand.
So how do we protect that? That is voluntarily?
I, maybe that would need to go before- Maybe that would need to go before the-
This is why writing laws is difficult.
I know.
Why we need to have-
You have a thought?
In a situation like that, they could go to the ZVA.
Say we don't want to, and the ZVA would say, sure, if you had a fire, go ahead.
Uh, I wouldn't think the ZVA would that's saving. That's sort of unfair, I think. There, there's gotta be a term.
Well, there is the provision for them to request the village pay a portion, but that would get them off-
No, that doesn't solve that.
Well, there's a force majeure, it's a force majeure, I think.
If by an act of nature.
Yeah, act of God.
You know, if a structure is being-
The negligence of God.
Hey, you guys, the hate. No, seriously, if, there's gotta be a term, if it's a vol, I don't think voluntary is the word that we want.
Elected, it's like elective surgery.
Hmm?
Elected, it's like elective surgery.
Elective renovations.
I like, would that work, Bren? Bren's suggestion of elected and maybe property where it is elected to renovate the primary structure?
I feel like we could get arguments on that, that says, I didn't want to replace my whatever, you know?
Well, I'm trying to go the other way and avoid a situation where somebody has a tree fall on their house.
I understand, and I'm in agreement with that part of it. I think we need to send it back to Will, Frank, and ask him for his advice.
And a tree falling on your house wouldn't require a planning board, unless you're changing it.
Well, it would require building permits and all that.
But this doesn't, this isn't, building inspection, building department doesn't trigger-
I like Tom's idea. Let's tell Will what our concern is and ask him for the proper-
Our concern is about putting in force majeure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, there's one other que, there's, oh, sorry, everybody.
I'm sorry, yeah, I mean, it might be something as simple as him saying beyond the original footprint.
But B seems to be our hangup.
That's the only-
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Um, there's one other option, which is, we make this law apply only to new construction.
That's another possibility.
And not existing buildings don't, you know?
Right.
Just take B out altogether, Jason?
Just take B out altogether.
That, I could live with that.
And then, but then, of course, it becomes, that, the village now is responsible for it.
Yeah.
The sidewalks get installed in established neighborhoods.
I would so much rather bring this back to Will with our concerns.
Well, it may be.
Well, which do, they're not future exclusive.
Sometime in the future, we should discuss who owns sidewalks and how we should handle sidewalks in general.
I agree.
I mean, many communities require sidewalks, but they are the responsibility and the ownership of the property. And the government is not involved at all, and maybe we need to have that conversation.
Or go, or go the other way and take them over altogether.
Yeah.
Plow them like we plow the streets.
Yeah, but we talked about that.
Oh, we did, didn't we? It was very expensive, we couldn't afford it.
Yeah, we can't afford it. So maybe we ought to think about, except for public property, which would be our responsibility, then we investigate and have a recommendation that sidewalks are owned by the property owner, and they are responsible for this.
It says that somewhere in the code.
They are, yeah, that's what happens now, yeah.
That's the recent comment.
Not really, because-
I don't think it says that the property, I don't think it says that the property owner owns.
No, but they're responsible for-
They're responsible for maintenance. But they're not respons, never says that they're responsible for construction.
No.
No, I agree.
And I, and we are not in a position to alienate property that might now be considered to be part of the public domain. So we can't cede property to homeowners now that is generally recognized to be part of the-
You'd have to have a grandfather.
Yeah, I will.
You'd have to have a grandfather, but-
But that's another conversation.
That's another conversation. So I like taking B out altogether, I think, from something.
Tom and Rebecca, what do you think about not having, having it only apply to new construction? That we don't require renovations to do sidewalks?
If the village owns the sidewalks, Rebecca, you cannot say to somebody, you're building, you can if it's an undeveloped lot, but I don't think you can say to somebody who has a house, you're gonna do a major renovation, you have to have a sidewalk, not the way our sidewalk law is now. So I think Jason's right.
It also would apply to businesses. So a business changes use that goes before the planning board, the BCO goes before the planning board, right? Or is that?
No.
No, that's internal to the building department.
Right.
When would a business need, when I do renovations inside? So a new barber shop opens up, they have to get site plan approval from the planning board.
They're building something.
They need to put a sidewalk in, the business.
Not because if it's, if they're taking over a building that pre-exists, they don't.
But under this, I'm just talking about as the law is written now.
Yeah.
Any property that is renovated.
Right.
Renovations is one of the things we require. So that's why Lagusta had to build a sidewalk. No, this law wasn't there.
See, I think you may have hit it on-
I'm confusing issues now.
Yes, you are.
I think taking B out does exactly what we can do at the moment, without getting into a whole discussion on sidewalk coordinates as we now have.
And Rebecca, you want Will's advice on taking out B?
I do.
Okay.
And Tom?
Yes.
I mean, that's what I mean.
Yes? Yes, which?
Yes, I want Will's advice.
Okay.
Yeah, on section B.
So Katie, do you have that note made?
Yes.
And you can get that, you know, to Will? Thank you.
Is there any other problem with the rest of it?
I didn't see him.
I didn't either.
I didn't either.
Nice job, Bren, thank you.
No.
Um, down to nineteen and twenty, R1 zoning setbacks.
Oh, okay.
That's not even, just eight thirty.
Wow!
We have had this discussion so many times, and I can tell you, the ZVA's point here, we have had how many ten changes to front yard setbacks under variance? And Bren, as Bren has pointed out, there are almost, if there are any R1 properties that have a fifty-foot setback in this community, so the fifty-foot setback is sort of silly.
Yes.
And I would rather fix the setback for R1 than get rid of R1.
So the only question we really have is whether, I agree with Bren, with Bren that the twenty-foot setback is the most reasonable, only because if half of the R1s are twenty-one point four, that means half of them are less than that.
Right.
So, as opposed to the planning board suggesting that's a slightly higher number. So I'll move that we-
But that was what I wanted to ask, you recommended twenty-five.
I recommended twenty, the planning board recommended twenty-five.
I'm gonna go with the planning board, because that is what we have done out on those houses.
But here's, but here's the thing. At least half of the R1 properties would still be non-conforming if it was twenty-four, because the average setback is twenty-one point four. So at twenty, so no, twenty-five, I mean, it wouldn't cover it.
Yeah, twenty would cover it, twenty-five would still need a five, four point variance.
What is altogether the side, back, front, you know, R1 required, the coverage required?
What is it required?
Total, square footage.
Oh, I don't know.
You've got side lots, you've got backyard lots.
It's gonna vary depending on the depth of the lot and width of the lot. It's gonna vary depending on depth and width of lots.
Exactly, so my point would be that we set a figure, I don't care whether the house comes to the front of the lot and all of the coverage is in the back or the sides. Maybe the way to look at this is not front setback, because what if you wanna build a solar house and you wanna angle it, but the lot is pre-described? As long as you have, that lot is, say, a hundred feet, then the, we could say minimum fifteen front, but as long as the integrity-
Well, I think that what we've got now is not-
Reasonable.
Not realistic to what's out there. The code doesn't match the properties.
Right.
So right now, the average on the properties that are out there in R1 is twenty-one front back, front setback. The rear and the side are much more difficult for me to measure because-
What?
Because I can see on an aerial photo where the road is and measure, but I can't see where the actual sidewalks lights are and rear yard is.
Well, what if we said, I mean, I'm just tossing this out, it's gotta be a certain overall with a front setback of no less than twenty. You, so if you wanted to have fifty, you could.
But you can always, I mean, so the law, the law really always is permissive.
It's a minimum setback.
Unless it's explicitly restricted.
I don't wanna reduce the overall lot size required.
And, and I think-
Oh, I see what you're saying now.
I think that we're not reducing the lot size, because I looked at lot size and the law reflects what's out there in the lot size. So we're still saying the lots are gonna be the same size that they've been required, but they're gonna allow to have the houses closer to the road, which is what people want anyway.
Right, but if you're not, so you're saying that the lot size will be protected?
Yes.
Even if we're gonna reduce the front?
Yes.
That's because it's typically, it's stipulated separately in the legislation.
And the percentage of the lot, coverage percentage is also protected.
Yes.
So you're still-
Why did the planning board want twenty-five as opposed to your recommendation?
They were just chatting about it, I don't think I had really decided on twenty yet at that point when we were talking about it. And they came up with twenty-five, and I said, nah, I think we could go over, I don't know.
You know, for framing this, I'm gonna make a motion, because Bren actually wrote up most of a local law that dealt with the R1, and there was two, only two or three issues. I'll move that we, um-
Amend?
How would I do this? Uh, because we have to send this to Will to have him put it into legalese. I'll move that we send this local law to Will to be put into format, I'm sorry. I move that we send Bren's notes on district, on section two, twelve, thirteen, A, to Will to be drafted into a local law.
As an amendment.
As written for now, and then we can amend it as we go. So what, so, is there a second? Okay, good, so now for discussion purposes, because there's a couple other things we gotta make sure to talk about.
And we discuss it with the planning board.
Let's get a straw, who, I, I think twenty feet is better because it gets more out of the non-conforming, previously non-conforming use category. But also, anything that gets houses closer to the street is good in a village, I think. And Sally's in favor of twenty-five?
No, twenty, well, I can do twenty as long as we're not sacrificing the lot size.
Oh, okay, I thought you were still on twenty-five, okay.
No, we're good.
No, okay.
Modern technology today, given a lot of people are trying- Given technology today, given a lot of people are trying to do solar, we have to give them the ability to do that. And fifty feet setback, given our view of trees and given our view of protecting trees, you know, which is too much. So I think we, I, I, what Bren is trying to.
Okay, good. So let's go through the other couple of changes Bren is suggesting. Um, right up at the top under A, one A. Why, uh, it says one and two family detached dwellings are principal permitted uses. You, you deleted the detached. Why?
A two-family detached dwelling doesn't really exist. I mean, I understand the concept. I'm assuming that means two-family is detached from the garage, but when you say a two-family detached dwelling, you've just.
Created two single-family homes. I see.
That's the only reason I took that out.
And then not, under two C, obviously because we do now allow the keeping of
Yes.
towel or chickens specifically.
And R1 district is most likely to have a big enough lot for it.
Right. And then, this was the one I was curious about, three E, eliminating under specialty permit uses, eliminating accessory uses, customarily incident to principal permitted uses, but not on the same lot. Is that because of the same lot?
Yeah, not on the same lot. That means you could put a garage in R1 and no house, and I don't think that's what we wanna do.
No.
I don't think that belongs in our lot.
I see. And that was, those are the only changes besides the numbers, yeah?
Yep, and the word setback I added.
Setback instead of.
Minimum yard setback versus dimensions.
So I'm happy with this as, as it's written.
Me too. Let me go through. So the minimum yard setback, you're changing dimensions to setback.
Right. Dimensions is confusing as well.
That covers now my question. Now, we have to stay twenty meters, okay? Rear yards, twenty. Okay, now, this is my question. If you are reducing the front yard to twenty feet, okay, the rear yards to twenty, and the sides to ten, you are reducing the entire lot size?
I, I think you're saying I'm reducing where you can put the, or increasing where you can put the house, and.
But you are also reducing lot size because twenty by twenty by ten is smaller than fifty by twenty-five.
But the minimum lot size is still the same. So in another section, a couple, um, letters up from that is minimum lot size. That's not changing.
And this does not automatically change that?
Nope.
Because if, you've checked.
Yes, it just changes where the house can be placed on the lot.
That's why.
Yep.
And gives a slightly broader.
Room to play with.
Room to play with, yeah.
I'm good.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Good work.
I believe that's it. Uh, we have to table, uh, for Bren, for Bren. Uh, we have to table also number twenty-one because.
Twenty-one, we haven't had our meeting yet. So that goes on to the February agenda, please, because we don't have anything to talk about at the moment. We need twenty-two, and I was going to suggest, Jason, Nancy would like to have a parking meeting, and we look at a lot of, you know, the two-hour residential requirement. TIC is requesting two meters. We be given the opportunity to have the meeting and make a whole big recommendation.
So you wanna table twenty-two as well?
Just until, until the, uh, February agenda, please. And that, we will incorporate this request from the TIC into that whole thing.
Okay, so which item number is Sally?
Huh?
Twenty-two.
We have a lot of things coming before us, and Rebecca, if you could get me your thoughts.
Yes, on number ten?
Incorporate that, um, if you could, and then, as we know, our post office parking lot is coming up, the rental agreement is coming up to renew, we have meters there.
Yes.
There is some thought that we may not want to renew that lease because, and make a free parking lot for whatever the owner wants to do with those meters, since we have requests from some of our businesses up Main Street, and see if we have enough.
Relocate them, yeah.
I counted fifteen, but there may be more, and that would give us.
Yes.
So if you would let us just come up with a whole proposal, and you get me
That's very good.
your concerns that you want us to, okay? Or you could join us. We're meeting Tuesday at ten.
Yes, um.
If you could make it.
No, I did see that meeting. I may be able to, I'm not positive.
Okay, if you can't, will you let me whatever you're thinking about? Okay.
And, um, just, I probably, just in case I can't make the meeting, one item that I'd sent to, um, was discussed in by PED and also sent to TIC, um, was the change of the, um, crosswalk at.
That I don't have, so.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll fill you in on it. Yeah, I'll send you my most recent email on it. Yes.
What you're thinking on long term and what in the world the expanded needs.
Yes.
So if you get all of those, then Jason is gonna meet with us. Jason and Nancy and I will come up with a whole package.
Good, okay.
That includes all of these.
Yes.
Our annual review of parking. Okay.
All right, so we're actually down to.
Streetlights.
Um, Sally, also, if you could, um.
And I will include your thoughts about, oh, no, that's not, that's streetlights.
Okay, um, also, I'm just thinking also if you could involve our parking enforcement officers, if possible.
They, they always are asked to review proposals.
Okay.
They reviewed the parking plan.
Good.
The original parking plan people, they were in on that, so.
But even if they could, you know, be invited to the meeting, that would be good too.
Um, inappropriate, I think, and, but the package will be sent to them for all comments, suggestions, certain changes. That's what we're doing. You wanna do the streetlights?
Sure. Um, I went out, because this is something that was, we were supposed to get done last year, but just kind of fell for the cracks apparently. I, because I know that Oriana and Chief Snyder went out last year and looked for these same lights. So I went out with the chief and the head of, not the head, the, uh, rep from Central Hudson, came up with these five, uh, locations, and am requesting the village board approve Central Hudson installing the lights. It doesn't cost. Okay, uh, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it doesn't cost us anything, it just costs us electricity.
But, but thank you for getting this done. This is, we promised to do this, and, and it was a coordinated effort with Chief Taggakin that we get some improvements in our lighting on Atlantic Hill Avenue, and this will do it, and I am very happy.
And I'm also looking at, just so you guys know, I'm looking at other areas of the village. The chief and I are gonna drive around, we got some suggestions
Both Rebecca and I have two suggestions. Church Street is one.
I got Church Street on my list.
And then Rebecca has been very interested in getting some lighting down at the Sore Plant Parking Lot.
All right, I'll add, I'll add that.
Because people, that came up in our, one of our parking meetings several times, that merchants say they will park there if there is lighting, but it is not a safe place to park after dark now. Now, it may be, we'll need the pledge of people, you know, but we at least would like to know what it would cost to do.
Yes.
And Church Street, definitely. I mean, we have talked about that for a while, Jason, when we wanted to think about our park, our pocket park. That, the, the lighting on Church Street is really gotta be fixed. Now, Blue says that part of it is the number of poles you're allowed to have. My question is, can we put LED lights or something that's stronger? We shield that push the light down?
They don't have, Central Hudson doesn't have LED lights available yet. They're expecting to have them, um, available to customers by the end of this year, and that you'd be able to, you'd be able to replace a certain percentage of your streetlights every year with the LEDs.
I don't know what the answer is on Church Street, except it is not a safe place right now.
We can put up streetlights, but we, we want the more environmental friendly LED ones, which we can't get till the end of the year, but after that, Central Hudson will come back and swap out like X percent every year.
We have some nice businesses on Church Street now, and people don't want to go down there after dark through them. And I think that's sort, and, you know, if I lived there, and Rebecca and I talked.
I, yeah, if I'm walking down Church Street at night, I walk down the middle of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we really need.
It's on our list. We've got that, and we've got pencil, we've got Pencil Hill Water Street, we've got Henry W. DeBois, we've got, uh, Slate Street, West Center Street.
We've got a lot of stuff there.
I've got about ten places to look at for a streetlight.
Did we vote on lights plan, Katie?
Uh, no, you moved it, Rocko seconded it, but we haven't actually voted.
Okay, any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you.
Uh, website. Katie, are you satisfied that we're good enough that we can?
I do. We've, we've had a little while to kick the tires. We still have adjustments to make, but I feel that we are at the place where we can pay, where we can make payment to the vendor, and I feel that, I do know that Trusty Rhodes, um, has given us, um, things she would like us to adjust on the website, and.
And just out and out corrections, right, right. That's not for him, that's for you as the webmaster.
The vendor is coming, um, this week to work with me again so that we can make the corrections, but I believe that we've had enough time to kick the tires to, to pay the vendor. I'm comfortable.
For you as webmaster, do you understand the new website well enough that you can go in as the webmaster and make the changes necessary?
I think most of them I have. And I, I would say ninety-nine percent of it I could, and are, and not only that, but the contract states that, that the person who designed it will have to help us in, under certain circumstances. And I also feel confident that our own IT person, um, can assist if we have any trouble reaching our vendor.
Then I'm gonna move the, the last payment out to the vendor's page.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Rebecca is.
Aye.
Aye.
Before we go, is that true?
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Tom, you want your six minutes?
You know enough, you know, twenty fifteen, the wall does.
Table.
Oh, we don't have the information.
Okay. Yeah.
Are you going to have a, a proposal for some pretty graphics?
Yes, I'm gonna get a, I'm gonna get a.
In bedboard?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
At least one proposal. I'll see if I can get a couple of different prices.
Well, this is from you.
This is from me.
I didn't, I didn't have, I wanted to make sure everything, I did.
May I start?
If we, I added to the agenda the clarification of the motion that was made December third, which Jason said was not the intent of the motion on how to use the future energy. And he, the motion itself made it sound like we were going to study geothermal and only that. And so I want a clarification of the motion.
So I'll, I'll move to clarify the motion, the intent of the motion, that geothermal be studied as an option for future village hall use.
And, and that you have asked Blue to come up with a recommendation in his board as to how to improve the current.
Well, that's a separate thing.
Put it right there, and I'll second. Oh, I can't second, I wasn't at the meeting.
All right, that's fine. It, it doesn't do any harm. Uh, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
I don't know that I understand.
There was, there was a motion that was made that it was worded so that it sounded like we were saying the only option we want for village hall is geothermal.
This is.
Well, I'm sure that was not the case.
Right, and so we're just clarifying that geothermal is something we want to look into for.
Yes.
For the future.
But it's not the only thing we're looking at.
Okay, fine.
So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
And I have to speak.
Okay, and now Tom has asked for his three to six minutes, or six to twelve minutes.
All right, this is an update and a motion for your consideration. One, Dave Clausen, lead engineer for freshwater exploration phase two, has now received the last data sample for the Walkill River from the lab, and he has sent the entire package of results to New York State DOH with a request for an expedited decision about the possibility of using a Class B stream for drinking water. We have not, uh, we have not, until now, been encouraged by DOH to believe that this will be readily decided. I just wanna be clear, we're sending this to DOH, they have not said that they're gonna expedite anything. We're requesting that. At the same time, I want to note for the record that at last week's village board meeting, representatives of DEP reiterated in very clear terms that they are not likely to fund any proposal to use the Walkill River as a source of treatable drinking water. We may be waiting on the DOH decision for no significant reason. So, now for something altogether different. Since last week's meeting, which was attended by two town board members, I've had several discussions with them concerning the readiness of the village board to work with the town to seek cooperative solutions for the provision of potable water to vill- village and town residents during the projected New York City DEP shutdown periods. I've gone back over my, uh, records, uh, by the way, and I have noted at least three instances in the past when I was asked to work with the town, uh, to figure out cooperative arrangements with them. And I've consulted with our attorneys, of course, throughout this. I'm there, I thereby move that I be authorized to work with the village and town clerks. I believe that must be done through the clerks, right? Uh, to arrange at the first reasonable opportunity a joint meeting of the town and village boards for the purpose of considering such cooperative solutions to the supply of potable water during a projected shutdown periods. A further note, before we consider my motion, I had planned to propose a much more strongly worded and detailed motion for your consideration. But I am deferring to the opinion of council that I wait until we have some further input about some of our options. However reluctant I am about any further delay in our decision-making in this regard, I am keenly aware that March of two thousand and seventeen is getting closer every day, respectfully submitted. So I'd like to put the, well, I would like, there's, uh, the motion's on the table.
There's a second. Is there a second?
Um, I'd like to amend. I do not think that Mr. Rocko should have to have the responsibility. He's carried a big load on this, and this is something both the village clerk and the town clerk have the legal responsibility to do to get a meeting together, and.
At our request, at our request then, which is what Tom said.
And so if they wish to consult Mr. Rocko, that's fine, but I do not think we should burden him with the responsibility of the town clerk's job for the village clerk's job, and I know the village clerk has worked diligently to try and will continue to diligently work to try to have a joint meeting.
I, I understand that, and, and that's why I, of course, said to work with them. Uh, I, I do, I wanna, I want to be involved.
Yes, but you don't need to be all the time.
So that I can, uh, move some people, uh, myself, if necessary.
But you understand what I'm saying, so.
Yes, I do. I do understand.
I don't want anybody coming back and blaming you the fact that people haven't had a meeting. That is, we're all big, and we should take the responsibility of being willing to discuss with each other, and even if we don't agree, the ability to agree.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. I, I know that I can get an agreement to bend it, so I'm saying that I wanna have a meeting.
The wars are all well and good, but I'm tired of them, so.
Technically, we don't have a, a second to Tom's motion yet.
Hmm?
We don't have a, a second to Tom's motion yet.
Is someone gonna second Tom's motion?
You're willing to.
I, I seconded it, and then I wanted to amend. Just on that one little part.
So what exactly is the motion then? Sally?
We're gonna have a joint meeting with the town to talk about water and water solutions as a community.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me, let me then, as part of the discussion, uh, on this, uh, suggest that the motion that I made does not suggest that I'm gonna take over the, uh, work of the two clerks. It suggests only that I be authorized to work with them to facilitate a meeting.
Well, but my point is, I don't want you to, I think the two clerks are quite capable and if the clerks can't get the cooperation of their boards, that's a different issue. If the boards refuse to meet and cooperate, I don't want you to feel that you have failed in the effort because it's not your responsibility, it is the clerk's responsibility and all our responsibility as members of the town board and members of the village board to grow up and work together. Do I need to say it any clearer?
No, you don't.
Thank you.
I agree. Might I ask for plan of clarification? I, I'm delighted to schedule.
You like a definition of grown up?
No, I'm fairly clear on that. Um, would you like me to try to schedule the con, the master, the comprehensive plan and this meeting at the same time?
We haven't even voted to do this yet.
As a separate meeting, I don't think we want it as a part of the town board meeting and I don't think we want it as a part of the village board meeting because it's gonna be a lengthy discussion.
Well, for my part, I, I admire the sentiment, but in term, I'm not really sure what the purpose would be. Cooperative solutions to the supply of potable water during the projected shutdown period. We know what our, our options are, we just have to make the decision about which ones we're gonna choose. And if for some reason we should go with the Walkill, then we got to figure out how we pay for it. But to have a dis, a cooperative discussion with the town about a long-term water supply for the town and village, which is what, what I mean, what is meant by the community, that is something that should be folded into a comprehensive plan, to be honest. Because you only need, you only need municipal water and sewer when you're doing high-density development or lots of development, like to say in industrial farm. So from my point of view, that, that's a no-brainer for the village, because that's where we wanna, we always say we want to put all that stuff. In the town, what we see with the planning documents is more that people want to preserve the rural character. So to have, I'm just kind of extrapolating here, to have a, a broader water supply and sewer supply in the outside, outside of town may or may not be good planning. But I'd like to, uh, so for me, in my head, it makes sense to have a, for us in, if I could wave my magic wand, we do a comprehensive plan first, we see where we want growth and development and then we plot where we put water resources after that.
That's not where I, where I'm going, I don't disagree with you in the big picture, but in the immediate picture, we have to solve the water problem. Even if we're only talking about a temporary two, ten-week period
Right.
and a lot of the solutions are not in the village and I think that we need to sit and talk about what our studies have shown, what we need to do
Yeah.
and just agree to cooperate together as best we can, that's my intent.
Well, I mean, I'm all for cooperation.
I'm just like to cite one discussion that I have had with Dave Merzinger, in which, uh, Dave suggested that there may be solutions that are legally possible that we could effect, uh, outside the village, but it would not be best practice at all.
Right.
Best practice would be for us to have a cooperative agreement with the other entity that's involved. And he is recommending that as best, you know, again, there's a difference between absolutely required and best practice.
Sure.
That's best practice, I would like to follow best practice.
Me too, and I, do you have any problem with putting these two meetings together as?
I'm, I'm not sure, um, uh, I want to do comprehensive planning. Uh, I don't know that we have the time.
To do them at the same.
To do them at the same time, do you? Do you think we could do them at the same time?
If we don't.
Ten people around the table, you never know how little we can get done.
I suggest we try and then we go with the meeting open if we can.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, so we have a, we have a second and a, on that, okay. All in favor of Tom's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, me, I did.
Did you say that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Um, okay. Separate from the motion, okay? Your number two, okay? I would like it very clearly understood that the report and the contracts that we signed said a pilot would be done on the Walkill River. Now, it has not been done and for DEP who signed these contracts to say, well, we're not going to fund it, I think we need to have a discussion because then it should not have been in the contract, it is in the contract and my position.
We're isn't in the contract, so.
If you go through every single one, go through Dave's contract, you'll see that we have obligated ourselves to study the Walkill simultaneously too.
We did study, I, I grant, okay, so I grant you that we guarantee that we would study the Walkill simultaneously with the other projects. We have done it, we have done, uh, samples, we've done sightings. Uh, there was, uh, even phase one, there was a preliminary, uh, look at the Walkill. Throughout all of this though, throughout all of it, we have known that this is a class B stream and that decisions made by DOH in regard to a class B stream may require not just a, uh, permissive decision, but might require a policy amendment to change the policy of not allowing a class B stream to be used as a source of potable water.
I am not disputing that.
We have known it all along.
We may have known we were supposed to do it, what I'm saying, Tom, is it wasn't done, I want it done, I don't want to sit and speculate, I want to be told by the Department of Health almost immediately. You can consider using it or you can't and that, and I'm gonna move that the study by Hazen and Sawyer and Hazen, which.
Oh, this is the early, this is.
The early study.
This is phase one.
Phase one, no, no, this is pre-phase one, this was before any of us got involved in the water discussion at all, this was the study that was done that the village board knew nothing about and the report came out, which is what started the whole public discussion on water. That report has considerable information about the Walkill River and its potential and I would like that to be evaluated and considered as a part of the request being made to the Department of Health. Is that unreasonable?
No, not, that sounds very reasonable.
Considered by whom?
Hmm?
Considered by whom? You said you would like the report to be considered.
I, it's not ever been entered into the discussion as far as I know, I mean, all right, I'll just say it publicly. This was a report that was supposed to be done for the Village of New Bos by Brunier and Larius and by DEP. That report was never publicly discussed by this board, it was never publicly presented by Brunier and Larius to this board, it has some very, I don't, because I'm not a hydrologist, has some valuable information about the potential of using or not using. And I would think if we're going to the Department of Health that with all the analyses, the one-month analyses, that perhaps those results should also be considered and entered into the record for the Department of Health to consider.
The Department, you'll forgive, Department of Health has all the information from all of the studies and the, the study that you alluded to, I, you know, I got through page seventy today. So by the time I got it, I then started at the beginning and zoomed as much as I could. I saw many references to the Walkill. The vast majority of them were about quantity. They were about how much could be drawn during how many different periods of the year and that the quantity, uh, was, uh, almost surely sufficient to remove the amount of water that we need. That's what I saw over and over and over again in the, in the report. Now, I do not believe that DOH has been deprived of information about the Walkill. And I want, I want it clear that we have had an extraordinarily thorough review of the Walkill more than nobody else has ever done a twelve-month study of the Walkill. Nobody, we have had that done and that has been sent to DOH.
So what is the resistance of evaluating and defending not doing?
You want to send another document to DOH? Be my guest.
When the village engineer, the clerk, the Department of Public Works and our own specific engineer do not have a copy of the report, I am concerned.
Whose problem is?
Not mine.
It's not mine and it's certainly not our engineer's problem, who didn't write this?
That's why I'm asking.
Who didn't send it to anybody? Who is the one person who had a complete copy that we could find? This guy is a treasure, not a problem.
No one is saying he is a problem, Tom. I am saying that all information that we can have and have available and use properly is to be done.
Send it to DOH.
I'm not sending it to DOH.
Sally, you had a motion?
Yes.
Can you restate it, because it's been a while, I can't remember.
No, I'm just, I'm just taking exception to the tone that is being used. I am taking exception to the fact that we seem to be dismissive of the Walkill because the DEP doesn't want to do it.
I don't think.
And yet, Jimmy, they did say it, they, he stood there.
No, no. No, no, I, I'm not disagreeing about that, I'm not disagreeing about that.
Okay.
I heard that.
And I just think that at this juncture, we have to be more open-minded and get the answers to questions because if the Department of Health says, no, you can't use it, then that defines a whole new world. But if we don't be more open and we are dismissive of information or we have hidden it or whatever reason, I do not know, we're not going to get as best and good an answer as we should have.
I don't think we could do anything more to look at the Walkill River than we have done. I, I, I disagree with you that we've been dismissive about that option.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, hold on, now it's my turn. Sally, I'm sorry, you had the floor, now it's my turn. And I lost my train of thought, the, uh.
You were saying that we had looked at the.
Oh, right, because just, we've, we've had several discouraging statements and facts come up about the Walkill, but that hasn't stopped us from exploring it. I think the fact that, that the DEP did say they wouldn't fund any, any Walkill options, the fact that it's, uh, going to extend the permitting quite a bit while we wait for August to pilot, if we need to pilot, the fact that we're asking the DOH to expedite a review, the fact that we're asking the DOH to advise us based solely on the year's samples, I think we're doing a lot, I think frankly, we're bending over backwards to, to check to see if the Walkill is a viable source. I wouldn't say we've been dismissive at all.
That's not my point, my point is, within them is much information.
I think there's no problem in sending out a copy of that, um, initial, uh, report to DOH. They probably already have a copy, but who knows, we might as well send it on to them.
I can't make that assumption because Katie knows.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying.
We didn't have it in-house.
Chances are, chances are, Tom is right and they have it.
Yes.
Chances are, Tom is right and they have it, but we can send it to them anyway.
Yep.
All it means is they're gonna recycle it if they have a copy, it's, doesn't cause any harm.
Yeah, that's.
I would have no objection whatsoever to sending DOH whatever.
Even or the same page.
So your motion is to send that report on to the DOH for the?
Or ask Dave Klausner to make sure that the information contained within that report, because Dave had the report.
Right.
Make sure that information.
If you want, I will ask Dave tomorrow whether he knows that DOH has that report
To confirm.
or if they do not have it, that, uh, he provide a copy.
I think that, would that make your motion?
I'll accept Sally's.
I don't need a motion.
Don't need a motion now, because I'm just gonna do it.
I'll talk as long as we are doing.
Okay. Actually, we, I do need a formal motion to pay the vendor for the website, yeah, I.
We never did that?
We didn't, we discussed it, but we didn't actually. We didn't actually make a motion and Nancy will require one.
Okay, so, but before we get to that, are we, are we set with?
Yes.
This for now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, so I'll move that we pay Brendan Merritt for the remainder of the, uh, website?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And.
If we did vote on your motion.
I don't know that we did.
Did we vote on Tom's?
Yes.
We did.
Yes.
Oh, we did, yes.
And then we amended it, they, that it would be, that it would be the clerk's office, each of the clerk's offices, we made that amendment.
Okay, so.
It's laring so late that we call Klaus in now.
I'm gonna move to executive session to the work personnel.
Personnel.
Uh, personnel.
And I also have a personnel.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. With a five-minute break.
Yes.
Five-minute recess first.
Is there anything else after?